Okay, I'm going to call the board to committee the whole meeting for February 26, 2020. Mrs. Hutch, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
I will leave this on the table. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Dr. Schiller, President of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and Secretary of Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I make a motion myself to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshop setting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, then, Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutch, please go ahead.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. -- Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes. All right, we are in workshop setting. We have two items on our agenda tonight, both around instruction and technology. I think it's the both instruction, right? So, Dr. Schuler, would you roll?
Absolutely. So, this has been the committee in the whole meeting where, for the last few years, the board has heard an update on your future of instruction and technology plan, and we have tied into that then the update around the master technology plan. Obviously, technology is very, very closely connected to the instructional program as a tool that serves our instructional needs, although the master tech plan goes a little bit broader than that. So, Mrs. Murphy is going to handle the first of the reports tonight on FIT, and then Mr. Mack will handle the update on the master technology plan. So, I'm going to hand it right over.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schiller. All right, so, starting out here, we have our mission statement, and you're going to see tonight that there are many opportunities that we are providing our students to inspire, educate, and challenge and support them to reach their highest level of potential. So, here I started out with, this is just the slide that has our Ed Services work plan for the year, and so at the top right there, that driving mission for all of our work is around that statement right there where we are committed to prepare our students for their future paths by designing learning experiences that develop strong academic, social, and problem-solving skills. So, we are consistently returning to that big statement for learning with all of our work tasks, and you'll see here the bulleted list of work tasks that we outlined for the year, and most of those do sit in that research and development stage of the work. Here, I've provided the board with a list of those items that were on our work plan, and I merged that with the FIT learning environment components that they touch on. You're also going to see here, too, that the first four items we've provided the board an update on in December, January, and February, we're really going to be talking about those last four items that sit on the work plan this year, and you're going to see with those last four items, those are really exciting to talk about because they hit multiple FIT components within each of those, and that really was the goal for this year. Going into this year, we identified that idea of blending multiple components of our FIT plan together. So, let's dive in. I've organized this so we're really going to be talking first around the instructional practices that are occurring in K-8 and the work that we're doing at our high schools. So, the work at K-8 has really been around inquiry-based instruction and some work in our math instruction, too. So, let's start out with inquiry-based lesson design. So, through the process, every time I'm working with teachers on this project, and I put the visual up of the FIT learning environment without the check marks, and every time I say, "All right, so which components hit our FIT learning environment?", and every time they say nearly all of them. So, really, even I didn't check off time and location, but it really could be an opportunity in the future here. So, they -- I even had a teacher say, "I never thought we actually would be doing all of them with one learning experience." So, it's super exciting. So, here's what we've done this year. So, in our inquiry-based learning leadership team, we have over 40 teachers that were trained in November, and that team consisted of classroom teachers, special education teachers, EL specialists, and our library learning specialists, too. And so, each team consisted of multiple people coming together around this instructional design. Each group has designed one unit that they are going to be implementing during the third trimester, and we had our initial training day, but then we had small group design time with each grade level during the months of January and February. And the reason why we are really focused around inquiry-based instruction is really because the new social studies standards are all rooted in inquiry lesson design. And so, this image right here comes from the National Organization for Social Studies Instruction, and it really talks about that shift in instruction in social studies. And so, the big shifts are the two areas that sit on the outside of that image, where we're using compelling questions and we're communicating conclusions and taking informed action. And what I love about this as well is our writing message production goal really blends nicely with this work as well. So, we're going to dive in a little bit deeper here to understand what inquiry is. So, inquiry-based learning has some common themes that you see right here. It starts with a compelling question that drives a student's learning and makes it purposeful. It always moves to rigorous investigation, and then it ends with taking action. So, here I've provided you with an actual example that has been developed by our third grade teachers, and so in social studies in third grade, students learn about what goods and services are. So, we have shifted that learning experience to make it even more meaningful for students by starting with a compelling question where students are asking and learning about, like, can I get everything I want or need from my own community? And so, these compelling questions don't always have one answer. They are supposed to really give students the opportunity to think and wrestle with the content. So, that fits with our FIT learning environment really well with that idea of higher, you know, level thinking. And then it always moves into rigorous investigation, and in this case, students would be -- are going to be studying our local community goods and services, and they'll also be comparing that to other communities. And then, the most exciting part of this learning experience is really that taking that informed action. And so, in this case, our third graders are actually going to be pitching a new business idea based on goods and services that might be needed in our community. So, the teachers talked about the empty storefronts in downtown Wheaton and what may our community need around goods and services. And so, you can see right there, it's that contextualized learning as well, and that idea of collaboration and creation that comes out from our FIT learning environment. This is an image that comes from a book and that we've been using, a professional learning book that we've been using quite a bit, that I think really captures where we're going with this idea of inquiry. And so, right now, that example I shared with you, it really sits on that far left-hand side of the pool where it's very structured, and students are all studying the same question, and they're coming up with the same, you know, culminating action project as well. But really, to move across this field, this pool, and get at the heart of what makes the inquiry-based instruction so powerful is when you get into those deeper ends where it's around free inquiry, and our students have that opportunity to develop their own compelling question, do their own investigation, and also come up with their own ideas for taking action. And so, this is that idea that sits on our FIT learning environment where we're really differentiating, personalizing, and individualizing that instruction, but I have to say, it's going to take a while for us to get across that pool, but we're certainly very excited about the work that we're starting with. So, moving into another work plan initiative is around math instruction, and again, multiple components of our FIT learning environment are coming through with this work. So, the image that you see right here, this comes from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, which is, you know, the group that we look at in terms of best practices in math instruction. And so, a few years ago, they came out with some landmark research that has really guided all the conversations that we are having around math instruction. And this image right here is just like that anchor around all of our conversations. It's these eight mathematical teaching practices that really shift that idea of instruction in our classroom. And so, I thought it was, it was a really great connection to go back to, this may look familiar to you. This was an image, a little portion of the article that Dr. Schuler put in our green folders back in January, and it had a section in there where it's saying, like, we need to rethink what the classroom and instruction can be. And when I read that, I thought so much about the work that we're doing around math instruction. So, from that National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, there is a little part in there that talks about shifts in math instruction, and I just took a little snippet from that and included it up here and tried to make the connection for you around how that connects with our FIT learning environment. And so, I'm just going to take the last, you know, row there, and it says, you know, "math beliefs were". So, this is really the kind of classroom, the kind of mathematic classroom that I sat in as a student growing up where students were guided step by step through a problem and showed every step of the way on how to solve it. Really, that mathematical shifts are asking students to be given rigorous, high-level problems, and they should learn to persevere in solving those. And I put differentiation, personalization, and individualization by that because it doesn't mean we need to make it challenging and students can't be successful, but we need multiple entry points that all students can succeed, but all students should also feel that challenge and be given those opportunities to develop as mathematicians. So, one of the most exciting pieces of work that's coming to our elementary schools, and I'm really glad Mrs. Miranda is here today because she's been helping lead this work, is we are actually at a point where we are rolling out a framework for math instruction. So, you probably remember that we do have a reading framework, and now we are going to have a math framework. And so, at the heart of this framework are those mathematical teaching practices. So, that's that image I showed you that came from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. That's driving everything. And then, there on the left, we have guidance for our teachers around planning and preparation that connect to our FIT learning environment. And then, you'll see there on the right side, we're making that connection for our teachers with the instructional practices that our math coaches have been working on for the last several years. So, our coaches have been working with our teachers to help them learn more about how to help our students with that fluency. They've been helping around that idea of higher-level problem solving, right, with rich math tasks, and they've been also doing professional development around number sense routines. And so, this is really going to be a document that we are going to be guiding professional learning around and having very focused conversations about how to make those shifts in math instruction. So, we're very excited to have this roll out. The ball's so busy in middle school around the idea of math as well. So, when I came on board and I did my tour of talking to all of the building administrators in July, every middle school principal told me the thing that I needed to start with was math instruction. And so, that's a big, broad area, and so, we decided, Mrs. Miranda and I, to do an audit of our curriculum and assessment and determine, okay, where do we start with this work? And so, that evaluation process was very comprehensive. It started with a lot of conversations with principals and us getting up to speed on what they're seeing in their classrooms and what they're seeing the needs to be. We also talked to teachers at every one of our schools. We looked at our data and results together and had conversations about the opportunities we saw, and then we did an audit as well around what curricular resources do we currently have and our scope and sequence. And what we heard loud and clear from our teachers was, they are really in need of new materials. So, it has been about 10 or more years since they have had new materials, and they also talked as well about wanting some changes with assessments. And so, as an administrative group, we put together a plan to do this work, and so, we are actually going to be piloting some new resources that do reflect those NCTM practices that I talked to you about. We met with vendors. They've selected two sets of materials that they believe will help them in the classroom, and they're very excited about it. So, we'll be doing that pilot in the fall and then coming back to the Board of Education around future recommendation with regards to those materials, and then after that, we will be moving into assessment of provisions. These, both of the resources that the teachers selected to pilot do have digital components, and so, they, I outlined those right here. So, there are digital math tools. There's content and skills checks, so students can take quizzes or assessments online, and they will actually auto-grade those, and teachers will get results right away, students get results right away. So, they're very excited about that. There's interactive tutorials as well, and then both programs offer opportunities for personalized learning experiences. So, this is very similar to what our elementary teachers have with DreamBox, and it gives students an opportunity to personalize their learning and, you know, close holes that they may have or also have additional challenges. Yeah, I was just going to say, good time stop before we transition into this one.
I guess my biggest thing would be, you know, in terms of what we're going to be providing in terms of professional development for teachers with inquiry-based is a very different. I know that a lot of times teachers do like control, and letting that go and being more of a facilitator sometimes is not a natural process, and so, how are we going to kind of bridge that? I guess it's that swimming pool in some respects kind of way, but what are we going to be providing for teachers, especially at elementary level? They have so many subject matters that they're dealing with and a lot on their plates.
Right. So, a couple answers to that question. First would be, we're starting with a grassroots group of people that really wanted to jump into the pool right away. So, we're working with that group this year and also next year, and we've asked all of the folks, we said, "Okay, you've gone through one year of this. Would you like to come back and continue this process?". And we've got everyone saying yes, they want to come back. And so, we want to start with this core group of people who have volunteered to embrace those shifts first, and then using that critical mass, we want to bring the others on board. So, that's step one. But then, step two is, yep, we can design the instruction on paper, but you're absolutely right, there's another stage to this. There's actually the instructional practices that we are going to need to support. So, in the Ed Services Department, we all adopted a grade level. My grade level is third grade, so I do plan to touch base with those teachers on the leadership committee while they are doing that actual lesson and be able to, like, be boots on the ground and be able to hear from them because I think we're partners together in this because these are new instructional shifts, and I myself didn't teach this way. And so, I need to partner with the teachers and find the resources they need to continue to grow together.
You mentioned the, you know, this evaluation process and so on. What specifically, I'm a little confused about what, you know, what are we, what's changing? What have we identified to be a specific type problem? What are we doing to try and solve?
Absolutely. So, I think in middle school, so in middle school specifically, there were multiple things that we heard, and the number one issue that we heard first and foremost was our teachers are out there searching the internet to find the right materials to put in front of their students on a day-to-day basis. So, there, they don't have the tools at their fingertips right now to design instruction without putting a lot of prep work behind the scenes. And so, that's step one. We want to take that searching process off of their plate and provide them with those high-quality resources so that they can spend more time thinking about their instruction as well. So, that's number one. Number two, the assessments, our teachers said right now, they need to revise those assessments to match the major content that we want and the major skills that we want students to have. So, those are the two big work tasks that we have right now.
First one would be solved by better textbooks, by?
Yep. So, we, that's where we're going to pilot two resources, and they, I'm hesitant to say textbooks because the world of instructional materials certainly looks different, and it's more online resources where teachers have access to those materials online and students would too, but they do come with print materials, too.
I just, so, we're saying, though, like, print and school, or somebody produces an online service or subscription that would provide learning like that?
That's exactly right. So, teachers would have access to lessons and ideas and materials that they would use with their students' instructional purposes.
Okay, and the change in that instructional basis is what from what?
Right. So, it's, I'm going to scoot back here because this is going to help me explain that. So, right here are, this is really guiding all of those changes in math instruction. And so, instead of just teaching students procedural steps and answering math questions, dragging students through double-digit addition without that understanding of why am I doing this? What does this even mean? It's really this, these are those overarching goals and those shifts in instructional practices. So, the one, like, I want to pick one right, that's really great to capture this. So, over there on the left-hand side, "Support Productive Struggle in Learning Mathematics". I have to say, in my own experience in math instruction, I was pretty successful just copying what my teacher did and just following rules. I didn't necessarily feel productive struggle in wrestling with a difficult math problem that had language around it. So, really, I think that captures a lot of the ideas around these shifts in math instruction.
Where does coding fall into this? Is that somewhere in here in the math side?
We, it is. Now, we personally haven't started, like, those conversations this year, but I do believe that coding is a piece of the conversation.
Because we have, I remember Sandberg, I think we went to, and they had a club or something that did coding.
I do believe that many of our schools do have after-school clubs, but we haven't had a conversation, at least since I've been here, around formal curricular work in that area.
When do we do that? I mean, I, maybe coding's not important. I don't know. You know, I think it is, but.
It definitely can be. We can put it on the list of things to explore.
It's funny you mention that, Jim. I was in my teacher group last night. One of the teachers commented, her daughter or son, I don't remember, that is, in college at Purdue, and felt like so prepared for all aspects of what she was doing at Purdue except for coding. She felt like she was behind in coding. This is a student at Purdue, so this is kind of interesting.
Which is a core thing for, you know, engineers.
Just an observation, but, you know, kind of what you just, Jim just said.
Well, I was in a, I was in a class at Whittier, and I believe it was second grade, and I found it super interesting. They were taking word problems that did not have numbers in them and really had to look at those keywords to then try to figure out what numbers would actually work. So, it's really kind of taking it, I want to say flipping it around, but really having to understand language and how language is involved with math versus just having math problems. And that was really interesting because that was like a two-day lesson because they sent me all their thinking after I had been in there.
I'm so glad you brought that up. That is like, that's a perfect example. It captures those conversations that we've been having with our math coaches. They call those numberless word problems.
Do we not have a cycle where we're evaluating our teaching materials? It struck me as odd that you made a comment that it had been a long time since we've done it.
Yeah, we, there isn't a set cycle anymore. There used to be.
Okay.
There was, we had a very, this was even pre-time here, that there was a set process for, like, review of instructional materials, like, every five years. Couple of things shifted away from that. Number one, there were a couple of big rocks that moved with, when Common Core came into the fold, we really immediately, as most districts did, had to tackle two major areas, and that was a focal point for a while. And I think out of that experience, there was kind of a realization that review of instructional materials probably needed to happen more based on specific need and issue identified rather than just assuming every five years it's time to buy a new set of instructional materials. So, there's probably a little bit more of that traditional cycle still at play at the high school where they said, "We set an annual budget allocation", and kind of within each department, they rotate their review of materials. But I think elementary and middle school, yeah, we kind of followed the implementation of it, and really at the elementary level, it was all four content areas. We really went in order of ELA, math, science materials aligned to NGSS, and then the social studies materials a little over a year ago, and I think now we're kind of coming back to realize where there are pockets that need to be touched up again.
I'll add on to that as well. When Common Core came out, there weren't a lot of high-quality instructional materials that folks wanted to purchase and recommend because it was too new. And we're really finally at the point where there are multiple choices on the market that are high-quality and reflect those instructional shifts that we want as a part of our classroom. So, it was the right choice not to make a big purchase when those standards were new.
One other question I have on the cornerstone, I'll call it a collaboration and creation. Let's say we have a fifth grade, third grade, it doesn't matter, but how do we assure, is the group that would be collaborating the entire class, or is it smaller group collaboration and they're both?
Most of the time, smaller group or partners.
Okay. If it's a small group, I detect through. One other question I have, on the cornerstone, I'll call it a collaboration and creation. Let's say we have a fifth grade, third grade, doesn't matter, but how do we assure, is the group that would be collaborating the entire class, or is it smaller group collaboration? And they're both?
Most of the time, smaller group or partners.
Okay. If it's a small group, I detect from people I talked to about, you know, it seems as though, and this goes on, I think, through college or everything, is that, you know, two people in the group lead the group and the other kind of, where I did quote there. How do we encourage the full participation? Is there some mechanism that, you know?
I don't have a magic answer for you on that right now, but I can tell you, those are conversations that I have sat at the table and had with our teachers. And in fact, I had that conversation today with my high school teachers, where we sat and talked about, if we are giving the students work time, we need to give them the skills to be on task and productive during that time. And so a lot of these soft skills are as important as those content skills. And those are shifts for our teachers to work through on helping students learn those skills too.
Then the last item I have is just the, when do we introduce the concept of data to the students? You know, I mean, the world is so driven by data input now. I mean, not data, but statistics that helps support or identify problems and try to solve those problems. When do we start introducing that concept?
Well, there are measurement and data standards in kindergarten. They start there. But then the ideas of statistics, probability, really start in the high school.
I think we had a topic I had, former math majors, yeah.
Love it.
Focus on this.
It's awesome.
So we, so far, it's been a K conversation around inquiry-based learning.
Yep.
And math. And I'm just wondering, you know, within the world of math, we've talked about new materials and less, you know, different assessments. Have we thought about, you know, kind of other course offerings around math that might draw in inquiry-based instruction as a, as another way to kind of draw these two things together, such as social studies?
Right, right. And I, I do think, in terms of like different course offerings in math, is that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I have to say, right now, I think that those are possibilities. But I think right now, our concentrated efforts had, we had to take a big topic of math and focus in on a first step. And so our agreed-upon first step as an administrative group was really to start with our core instruction at our elementary level, and also our core sixth-grade course, seventh-grade course, and eighth-grade course. So that could be a possibility down the road, but this is where we're starting.
And then the other question I had was, do you have a, if you go, there was that one diagram where time and location was not checked?
Uh-huh.
And then I'm looking at, so you go to the five K quadrants.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know where I'm going. So that second paragraph, right? So the time and location, for our world, you know, that classroom is where you're supposed to be for a certain period of time, and that's where learning happens. And so this article is suggesting to you that, well, we all know that learning happens outside of the classroom. So I'm thinking about, so we potentially have a gap, a thing we haven't covered yet, with some authoritative, you know, figure here who's suggesting that learning's going to happen outside the classroom. Is that, is that something that, somewhere else down the road?
So I skipped ahead to this slide right here, because that last bullet point for me right there can hit on that time and location piece, where the materials have a digital component to them and allow students to log in that personalized learning piece with time and location would be much easier.
And I would imagine that question also goes to the next topic in high school, is that learned learning?
It sure does.
Is that a good transition for you?
It's a great transition. Okay. So shifting gears, we've had some different work projects at our high school. And so those have been around our writing message production work and also blended learning. And once again, this is really exciting to be able to showcase to you that we are hitting multiple components of our fit learning environment with the writing message production work. And so just a reminder, for the Board of Education, that goal on our Vision 2022 document has multiple components to it. It talks about speaking and writing, technology for message production, and digital citizenship. And that image right there, I keep using over and over again, because I think it captures the conversations that we're having so well. Because we're talking about really bringing balance to what our students are experiencing. That academic skills and knowledge, that is always going to be important, but that cannot be the dominant only piece that our students are having. We really have to bring that balance in terms of also making rooms for those soft skills that we were just talking about, and those, but also those future-ready skills and experiences that are critically important for students. So this is our first year in working through this writing message production work. And we've started with our high school. And so here you see the slide that I have used multiple times with our high school group, and we collaboratively developed some long-term plans around this work. And so first and foremost, we're having meaningful professional learning for our teaching staff. The big work sits right here in the middle around competencies. So we, there is not, this, this work is really unique for me. Almost every other curricular project I've ever worked on is, let's take science. When I went to work on science before, I had the NGSS standards. There's no magic writing message production set of standards. And so this is where we locally are developing what we feel is most important. What are those core competencies we want our students to have for this particular area? And to do that work, we're developing competencies, first and foremost, for our high school students. We're going to work back and have those competencies for our eighth graders, our fifth graders, and all the way down to our second graders. We also have the opportunity to talk about enhanced coursework, and so we're developing out in our career pathways, that communications pathway. So as we are doing that work, we have the great opportunity of thinking about what else we're learning about here that can influence additional courses and that, that career cluster. And this last part down here, we're powerful student learning first. So yes, it talks about technology in that goal, but we always want to learn, change that learning first, and we want to use technology to help us get there second. The goal is in technology first. We want to make those powerful learning experiences. So for this work, we also have a leadership committee. We have 24 high school teachers that are working with us on this. They actually represent all departments. And when we sat down to decide how to go about this work, at first, we had some conversations about the English department, and then as a collective high school leadership team, we actually said, you know what? These skills are so important that this can't just sit in one core content area. This, these skills need to be the, and students need these opportunities in multiple different departments. So we have every department represented and representatives from north and south sitting at the table. This last part down here, this is probably one of the most exciting things that I've had the opportunity to experience. And we actually had our second workday today on this, and we have 16 students participate in this conversation with us. And so we have Wheaton North and Wheaton South students sitting at the table, and we actually walked away with our first draft of our core competencies that students actually helped us develop. And honestly, if they had not been there, I do not think that list would have looked the same way. I know Eric was a part of that, Rob was a part of that conversation today. They truly influenced what went on that paper. And it was just really amazing. We just had these wonderful conversations around what learning experiences they want and what we need to make room for. And it truly changed the thinking of all of us in that room today. So that really hit on the professional learning that we experienced.
What were some of the comments that the students input?
You know, and I'm pulling up my sheet right here of some of the things that we talked about, but the one that got a lot of traction was around learning how to write a professional email. Yep. That took, that had a lot of conversation, even to the point, at the very end of the day, when I was sitting with the North team and we were talking, one of those teachers said, hey, I walked in this room today never thinking I should spend time on writing a professional email, helping my students maybe learn that, because they thought those are just skills we naturally learn, right? We're here to learn how to write essays and all the other things that our students do. And he said, boy, I'm going to be doing that soon, because our students think that's really important.
Have you thought about talking to recent graduates and getting some feedback in terms of what they wish they would have had?
Well, we will have that opportunity really soon, because we have recent graduates that are going to be a part of our Portrait of a Graduate work. So that will be our first opportunity to have conversations, but absolutely, we could try and capture their voice too with this. And we even, it was so powerful talking to our students today, and those were 16 voices, but both of our high schools left saying, we need to tap into more than just these 16 students. We need to think about all types of learners, because we need to make sure we really do have good representation around what our students want and need for their learning.
The other thing I'm thinking about as too, is I know that some colleges have now moved to creating a video versus doing an essay, because they can actually know that the student has done it versus somebody else wrote their essay. And, you know, just like those opportunities to be able to even...
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm looking at our list of core competencies right here, and it's going to, it's only a first draft, but we have things on here that say, you know, we're going to use multiple mediums to express our knowledge. And so, and empower the students to be able to, to select what tool they want to use. So I envision that being something that does get those experiences around. So here, I pretty much have told this story already that's on this slide, but the one point I want to highlight here is just the image there on the left. So like I said, there is no magic writing message production set of curricular standards that we can draw upon. Instead, we have to look at multiple different resources to help guide this work. And one of those resources is from ISTI, or the International Society of Technology Educators. And these are really their latest standards that came out in 2016. And I put a star by the ones that we dove in today and have a lot of rich conversation around. And so each team, including teachers, administrators, and students, really owned one of those that has a star and dove into them. And that's where we really, we use their work to really guide creating those core competencies. So. All right, blended learning. So this was not an item that was identified by the Ed Services Department as a work plan initiative, but the high schools had this on their work plan, and I am having the pleasure of presenting the great work that they have been doing in this area. And this actually merges really well with the writing message production conversations too. So it's a nice fit. But you're going to see here too, like multiple areas of our fit learning environment. So this is our first year, well, it's our first official year beyond one course and one teacher offering blended learning. So this year, we have multiple courses at Wheaton Warrenville South and Wheaton North that are often blended learning opportunities that I outlined right here. And for those of you who might say, what is blended learning? Well, here I've provided you with that definition. So it's using a combination of online opportunities and traditional instructional practices. Students have control over their pace, path, place, or time. And that's actually coming straight from the consultant that's been working with us around our writing message production work. So I've tried to summarize what this looks like in our district. So students do have access to their own device, which is very similar to a one-to-one department, environment. They spend two weeks in the classroom before blending, and those two weeks are really spent around learning organization, learning how this works, figuring out classroom management, where can I go when I'm not in the classroom? How will I communicate with my teachers? A lot of soft skills that are very important to being successful. The teachers who are offering these courses were very committed to making it a high-quality experience, and they spent their summer designing that course and received professional learning from our instructional coaches at the high school. They received their assignments from Google Classroom, and each week they get a, they get a schedule. And so they'll look at that schedule and they'll know, okay, I have to report to class on this day, or these days I'm out blending. And they can go to multiple spaces around the school when they are blending, the LLC and the Commons area for both schools, and then at North, there's a little more room with the Falcon's Nest. I have a short video that I'm going to show you. Jason Spencer at Wheaton Warrenville South created this. He was the first teacher to design blended learning experiences last year and pilot it, and he captured students' experiences around blended learning. So I am going to let the students tell you about it.
The overall blended experience, I would say, I felt it was great.
Genuinely, genuinely been like really good.
Honestly, the overall blended experience is pretty awesome.
Overall, I think the blended experience is a pretty good way for students to divide their time in a way that they think is best to get the tasks done and other tasks that they might need to get done.
Awesome, because the flexibility is the best part. I get to do like, especially if I'm super swamped, one day I can do specific work for this class, but also for others if I need help on other stuff. If I have homework due the next period, I can always just finish my work for blended or for military history and like...
It gives you your own time to work on stuff. So like, it's like, it's super flexible, because not only, you don't have, you're not forced to work on just like military history. You can work on other stuff too. And then you just have to make sure that you get your stuff done when it's due, pretty much.
It provides, I can either be in the class and work on what I need to do for that class, or go to like a different teacher if they're open that period and go work on something else that I'm struggling with, which is what I used it for. I needed help with math. So I always went to a math teacher, and she always like just like went through some problems with me, just to figure out like what I needed help with. And we actually ended up getting my grade up to an A, so that helped a lot.
For example, yesterday, I was able to work on my AP homework, my math study with a math teacher and finish some of the classwork in here, which helped loosen it up so I could study more for my AP testing, what's going on after school.
It's really easy to stay on task, at least for me, because like I'm always thinking, oh, if I get this done early, I don't have to worry about it the next day, so...
And I don't really find it difficult to stay on task. Usually I just plug in my headphones and work on whatever needs to be done, and if I get done early, then I'll work on other stuff. Because usually I don't find myself working hard after school, so I work really hard during the school.
As long as you get it done though, when like, when the due date comes up, that's what's important too. And you understand the lesson and stuff.
I don't think it's necessarily that difficult, as long as you know how to, how to divide your time.
I think, I just...
You get to go to, oh, I'm sorry. A or in the school too, that's, that's nice too. So if you want to go to the library.
Is that, is that like a semester program, or, so that they're taking a class that incorporates all these items, or?
Yep. So these courses are offered in a blended learning opportunity. So I'm going to take Wheaton North Response to Emergencies class. So that teacher, every student in his class for that period has a device, and during fifth period per se, they receive a... And during fifth period per se, they receive a schedule and they either report to class or they are out, maybe at the Falcon's Nest, doing the assignments that, um, that teacher assigned them. Or, one of the really great things is in that particular course, there's a lot of small group assessment or individual assessment that has to occur. So that teacher can say, these five students need to come to class because if you have an assessment that you need to do and other students are out working on their assignments for that course or other courses as we heard.
So of course, I mean, like, this is a class or it, it's not a group of classes?
No, it's one, one class.
One class.
They're, they're signing up for that class.
Which includes history, geology?
No, 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 no. Those are five different classes that kids might be taking.
Okay. And they, and they do that, they also take a regular math class and so on, okay.
Yep.
And who sign, what do we, how many students are involved with this at this point?
That's a really great question that I wish I had...
A hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, thank you, Rod.
A little under a hundred and twenty-five.
This is first year or second year?
Yeah, last, this is the second semester, this was first semester.
Wow.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Would you say that the stu, this is not an AP class, it's an I level or?
We have one AP course right now and we've Warrenville South Photography.
So what I like about, especially Response to Emergencies, that's a required class. So are we looking to see that this class then always becomes a blended learning class so that everybody has that opportunity to participate in a blended learning?
Well, a couple of factors to answer that question. First and foremost, next year, South is looking to make that a blended course. But one of the, and I'm guessing that, wow, it's going to speak to this too, coming up here soon, is to make this successful, those students have a device. And so not all of our students have their own personal device right now. So that falls in the limiting, one set of limitations. The second set of limitations we see right now is just the ability to have supervision for, you know, all the students that are part of the blended experience. So this is why we're really starting small right here. But next year, we are looking to expand, um, those opportunities.
It would just be nice if everybody had an opportunity to do that at some point during their... So if you took a required course, like that's the only one I see on here that is a required course. If you took something like that...
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
You know what I'm saying? Then it gives, then it, it, everybody has that opportunity.
Right. Of course, I, to your, I think to your piece of feedback, I, I would love to see us eventually grow to where every student has had a blended experience. I don't know that it has to be the same class.
Yeah, right.
Meaning that even Response to Emergencies, a lot of these classes are offered regular format or blended, right, format. But I, I think we need to kind of grow to a critical mass before we can really have a conversation about potentially making that a requirement. Again, either a blended experience or, um, I think as the, the board saw, we are still offering the fully online, um, summer school, uh, courses. So we will have some fully online, uh, experiences that'll, that'll be available. So I think over time, we're going to grow to kind of a range of, of opportunities. I, the last thing I was going to mention, I just had a conversation with, uh, actually a couple of other districts in this. Districts have taken very different approaches to the blended experience. Some that have literally set a schedule and said, in every blended learning class, the requirement is two days in class, three days, right, blended. We haven't done that. Uh, I think with, with classes, it is truly the, the need and the, the makeup of that instructional experience that may say in some circumstances, we need a heavier dosage of time in class with the teacher. And in some experiences, it can be truly more of an online, partially dependent, I think, on like content and what the, the experience looks like. But also I know, and, and I'm a bit jumping ahead with this, but I think, uh, our, our buildings have set different requirements around, um, student success. So if students are struggling, they lose that ability to kind of go out and do the work independently. They're still maybe doing the same thing, but a teacher has a capacity to say, gosh, if you're struggling, I need to see you five days a week. I need to have a little, little heavier point of contact to kind of help you, you work through this. Whereas if you're, if you're doing okay and managing the time requirements, you got a little more flexibility to, uh, to navigate through this. And the last thing I was going to say tied to this as well, Melissa mentioned the, the device, uh, issue. So I think that's something we've got to look at. The other thing that we have to look at paired to a larger scale rollout of this, um, when we, we, we will solve soon, I think we get to Rod's presentation, that issue of every student having, um, a device. But the second thing that I think we're going to need to deal with is just available space. So not just supervision, but available spaces for kids to work, which probably will, will have to do with some physical revamping. We need to do with some, some spaces today when we were with, uh, the writing message production. Uh, if you've been to Wheaton Warrenville South, the incubator room, there's a room that looks exactly like it, just on the second floor. And this year, they built that space out into really a more flexible learning space. So it used to be like a teacher resource area and now it looks a lot like the business incubator room, but it kind of serves that purpose, right? It's one more place where kids can go. But, but I even, I think three of the kids that were in the, the group I sat in on for a little while this morning in the writing message production, actually all three of the students had taken a blended learning course, but they all had very different perspectives on where do they like to work, right? So when, when girl said, I, I like the library because I like it quiet and, and I don't want the noise. A kid said, I like the Commons because I actually like the noise and the activity. It just helps me focus. And, and a third kid said, I, I wish I could just go sit in a stairwell. Like I'd do well if I could sit in a stairwell and, and work. And so he really said, gee, if you could just create some of those, like, like little spaces, like scattered throughout the, the building, like I, I don't need to be around a bunch of other kids. I just need my own little quiet nook where I can sit and get my work done. But, but they all, like, it was, it was just interesting because they were all very intentional, but had like a different thought around what space would work for them. But it, but it did lead us to say, we're going to probably need to do some, probably some, some facility revamping, perhaps in our library, learning centers in a few places where we can probably reconfigure. And, and those are, I mean, the good news is they're not million-dollar expenditures. You know, a lot of it's furniture configuration and smaller configuration of space. But, but I think we need to be kind of ready for that intersection of, uh, I, because I, teacher feedback is when we pull a little bit of the, the governor plate off of this, I think you're going to see a bunch of classes kind of move into that format. There's significant teacher interest in really looking at, uh, at opportunities when we kind of have the, um, that piece. But, but it will also, just in that operational space, it, it probably will mean at some point the board is going to see a request for some more general campus supervision because we do have to, we have people available where kids are at to at least have a set of eyes.
I love the idea though that they're figuring out while they're still with us, how they learn best versus they're trying to figure that out freshman year.
That's what I was just going to say. That's to your point about it, having it required because that's exactly what I was thinking easier before you're thrown into that, into college. And even if you don't go to college, even at work, I mean, in, in work too, you're given a project. It's like, I need that by this date and it's up to you to figure out how you do it. And so I think it's such a great experience for them to realize this is what college is going to be like. Except, you know, you have to go to class here, but you know, you can, just like, I loved how those kids were like, you know, I use the time to go get help in another subject because I know what I'm supposed to do here and I can do that later, but I can't get to that teacher if I, later. And so, and that's kind of how college is, you know, that you can kind of shift around and...
That's, that's, right, that's your question on time and place, right? I mean, those kids have started to say like, like time and place. I actually have a little more control over my schedule that says, you know what? Even though my schedule says that I should be in this class this period, I don't need to work on that right now.
Yeah.
I need to hightail it to my math teacher or the math resource area because that's where I need a double dose of help today. And then tomorrow I'll catch up on, on this. And, um, I, that is, that's a huge life organizational skill that I guess is...
And we talked today about how we need to give kids that experience and don't reserve it just if they have a blended course. We need, even in our traditional courses, that idea of time and location and helping students learn how to manage time and manage tasks. It needs to be a part of those core competencies our students and experiences our students have, blended or not.
Yeah. I love this for so many different reasons, but there's, there's one thing in here, or actually two things, and it relates to SEL. So there was a student there, you know, talked about how they went out and had contact with their teacher. And then there's a quote here at the bottom that the teachers even feel more connected with their learners. And that's at the core of what you've talked to us about, about that connection. So blended, blended learning helps enhance those opportunities and those connections. It's kind of crossing multiple paths, so. I, I love this in so many different ways. This is personalized learning at its best, right?
There was actually a student, uh, he was a junior at, uh, Wheaton North today and, and he was on the writing message production, but just by chance. Last week, I was, uh, in Sandy Burden's class. She's got a new class that's kind of working on this internship experience. I happened to pop in there as, um, two students were, uh, had, two students had brought a group of counselors together. So, right, think of it from this level, student voice. Student said, we've got some ideas around, uh, the kind of freshman mentoring program, just some thoughts on how that could be enhanced. They invited a group of counselors and key leaders responsible for that. What am I losing? The name of the program?
The East Coast Students United?
No, no, not that. It's the, uh, the freshman mentoring, the juniors that, uh...
Link Crew.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so they're, they're link crew leaders and they, you know, they just had some thoughts around the, the kind of curriculum and, and some approach. So the students brought teachers together and, uh, had put together a whole presentation and said, here are our observations from the link crew experience and some thoughts that we have about how it can be improved. But they also went a step further and said, we went out and did some research. We found this program that has some ideas connected to kind of our thoughts around, uh, around how it can be improved. But one of the young, young men who was, uh, involved in, uh, in, in sharing that was on the, the team today. And I think he just offered an observation to say, um, like, some kids are just not fully equipped with the ability to actually go advocate for themselves and talk to an adult. They know they need help, they just flat out don't have either the confidence or the skill set to actually like go and have the conversation. And, and he actually offered it from a, hey, I think it's something that, not just a teacher responsibility, like we as, you know, juniors, seniors ought to help younger students with just getting over that hurdle and saying like, it's not a scary experience. If you, if you need some help, you know, just, it's really simple. You just go to Mr. Paulson and say, I'm really struggling. I need a little help in, in this area. And, and what you're going to find is it's a pretty easy experience and you get ultimately what you need. And then you build these skills to just continue to, to advocate. And I, you know, again, I, I think a lot of these pieces are going to tie together.
Dr. Shulard, that actually made it to our core competency list based on that student saying that. Um, and a lot of others too. They actually added it to the list in saying that they needed, um, students needed to develop the ability to ask good questions and self-advocate.
I think that's interesting when you said, when you brought it before about the email writing and that it's like, we just can't think, no. And I, it's interesting because, you know, when email didn't come into play, at least for me, until I was in college, and so it just wasn't part of our upbringing. Like you, you wrote a letter or you called on the phone. So that's like, you automatically had to, you kind of didn't automatically have the skills. Where now they're all in LOL, O M P, you know, O M P, like it's all texting, that's how they write. It's when it comes to, because I went through that with my son too. And I remember I was talking to a linear teacher about it. He was already in middle school. I, the light bulb went on too. They're like, oh my gosh, we've never talked about how to write an email, you know? And so it's just an interesting thing that I think sort of lead... I, I love the student involvement. That's one thing I worked on. I think that's so important as we talk about curriculum and that, that we continue to have students involved in that because it's just so completely different from when we were all going to preschool.
The last little thing I'll just mention is that, um, the writing message production area too, not to, um, kind of spoil a, a, a piece to come at some point, but in the data gathering we've done around Portrait of a Graduate, um, from the thousands of streams of input that we've had, what is clearly coming out as the absolute number one skill that kids need to have is communication, right? The ability to articulate a, a, a message. And so again, it, it timely that that will be a prominent part of the, the Portrait of a Graduate work, but we've already got some, some kind of work in progress around that.
All right, let's round it out. What's next and what else do we need to consider? So, um, the work planned for next year, um, if we were to put that together today, here would be the items I would be recommending to be a part of that, um, where we would be continuing the same work, but moving really from research and development into like, moving into like partial implementation where, um, we are continuing working with the teacher leaders that we have in, um, in writing message production and inquiry-based learning and designing more instructional experiences. But math instruction, um, rolling out that elementary framework and supporting teachers with professional learning, taking part in that pilot for the resources and blended learning, as I said, increasing the course offerings. But also keeping in mind what else is in our, the future for our students and will they be prepared? So, um, there are several pieces of research out there or groups out there that have good recommendations. And so the institutes of the fu, of the future, they have a piece that talks all about the importance of advanced communication. I just pulled a snippet from their report out there. And all of the things I highlighted, these were the conversations that we were having today with students and teachers and making these ideas a part of our core competencies that we want students to experience. Um, the World Economic Forum, they put out their list of important skills to be on the watch for. And so you can see right there, their list. I use this all the time and pull this out in conversations when we're talking with our teachers. And it just lines up perfectly. Their skills, our Fit Learning environment, the work we're actually doing is part of our Ed Services work plan. Um, the World Economic Forum, this is hot off the press, January 2020, they released, um, this new white paper about defining new models in education for the Fourth Industrial Revolution. I am still digging through that report, but there's an awesome image in there on the left-hand side. It talks about the content shifts on the right-hand side, the experiences. And I circled the items that we directly really talked about today. We talked about global citizenship skills when I talked about inquiry-based learning and our students actually going out there and pitching an idea for, you know, what is needed in our community, innovation and creativity. Our writing message production work is going to result in students having those opportunities to creatively communicate what they're learning. Personalized and self-paced learning, checked. Blended learning, that gets that marked perfectly. Problem-based and collaborative learning. We had those conversations when we were talking about the shifts in math instruction. And last, lifelong and student-driven learning. We are talking about those soft skills. It's not, we can't be so heavy on our content anymore. We need to bring balance and we need to bring those lifelong skills and student-driven learning experiences. So, um, in terms of a recommendation for your dashboard this year, we would make the recommendation of continuing the making progress for our Fit Learning environment. So, any further questions?
Just a comment. So I think since the time that I've been on the board, Jim and I came on in 2013, we've been talking about FIT, which has been great. I feel like, like going up the, we've reached a new plateau, not a plateau, but a new level of talking about what FIT Learning is. And, you know, we, we went through almost all of those circles, you know, they're all checkbox, checkbox. And now we're really speaking about it in, to me, a different language about what we're trying to do with blended learning. And it's almost feels like there's another, like a new label on FIT, like FIT 2 or something like that, that really launching into a different, and maybe it's connected to the technology planet, how we're talking about space. Just a, a thought going forward of how we communicate that out to our community and parent community could be interesting. could be interesting, or at least intriguing to me.
So Eric, this was very to me because that was a part of our conversations today. We really drew attention to our teachers about that goal that's on the Vision 2022 document. There was, says the importance of communicating the changing landscape of education with our community and we've had conversations with our teachers around the role that they need to play in helping to tell that story and our social media accounts are super important to that process. Erica's has done such a fantastic job of working with our teachers and providing them lunch and learns around how to use those social media accounts. We just need more people to use the hashtag Your Community Schools so they can see all the fantastic things that are happening.
Okay, anything else?
Kind of just quickly as you're rounding out, so again, just a reminder for context one, thank you to Melissa, but just remember as you saw the updates around kind of key initiatives within the Ed Services Department, right? This was half the puzzle. You've also already heard updates on the work that we're doing around the dual-language, bilingual work, the work around foundational skills in reading, and then the work around career pathways. And there's nice alignment in all of that, but that's a big, right, plate of work, some pretty big rocks that are moving, so that's a lot to tackle. In the first year, I do remember just even with Melissa when she came in and we first started to talk about writing message production and like I'm wrapping my head around exactly, right, what this means, but I think it's really taken shape and moved forward in a meaningful way, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, Rod.
Okay, thank you.
Take us deeper into technology.
Right, well, and to comment on that too, I just think, you know, with the writing message production, I even think, you know, probably people in that room today too are kind of still trying to gravitate what that actually means, and I think at the very beginning of the morning when the kids like, I wish I knew how to write an email, a big part of it kind of went, oh, it's communication, it's teaching you all on how to, you know, get your point across without an LOL or an OMG. I mean, it really was an eye-opening moment, you know, for that part where a lot of people go, oh, it is just, it's not just making a movie or something, there's so much more involved in it.
It's actually a neat skill.
Exactly. And there's more to it than just writing an email, but I mean, it was very, to us, that's very basic and for the kids to go, you know, we need that help, there was a big eye-opener.
In the curriculum piece too, that last piece, we transitioned on that, it's awesome to have like a curricular program as well where certainly Rod is able to kind of share and lend his experience through the technology world to that instructional design. Erica is able to share her experience in the communications piece. I'm pretty sure soon we're even going to have Bill sitting on a curriculum team, that's the next step, but we're getting closer, so.
Giving me a chill.
That's right, man, can we?
He was a teacher, wasn't he? Again, this is, I haven't changed this slide since we switched to this format for the Master Tech Plan again, instead of attacking everything, you know, when I first started here with, was kind of all that fix-it mode, it really is now kind of long-term planning and working with other departments and making sure everything goes. Again, the biggest part there is, you know, fit, and I mean, whether we call it fit, fit 2.0, whatever it is, the learning environment, what we do as an organization is really what drives what my department does. I mean, that's really a big part of it. It's, we're not sitting there going, we need to do this and everyone else needs to jump on board. It really is, what do we need to do to support everything that we need to do, you know, educationally for the students. This previous year, and still things going on now, these were the big things that we shared last year that said we were going to do. We did do a refresh of the middle and high school staff laptops, docking stations, it's about 650 total when we do that. We did do a comprehensive email security for cloud-based email. Again, security's a big thing, you're going to hear me talk about here in a little bit, but we did put in Mindcast this year and still working on other parts of Mindcast. Right now, we're still focusing mainly on that email thing, catching anything that it sees as not worthy. It's made all of our spam, all of our email go greatly down. Yeah, there was a little learning curve there for people, but it has protected wonderfully in many areas. We did do an internet bandwidth increase, then failover. Last year, we went from a three gig internet total to six gig, where we have a six gig, a three gig line at Hubble and a three gig line at the SSC. They're both built for failovers, so either one of those lines, and they're from two different providers, so if one company goes down and the entire area, the other company's probably still going to be up, we still don't even peek over it. Two gig, three gig anytime, so we have a failover that can actually handle the whole district without having to slow things down. That is, again, a bonus to have that implemented in the district. We did do the blended learning course device pilot this year. That again was about 125 units in the concept of one-to-one for those students in those blended classes. I laugh, one of the girls today was very upset, it was in my group, that because she's not in a blended the second semester, she was in a blended the first and they had to take her device back and hand it to someone else and she's without one now, so she's like, I didn't realize how much I got used to having that with me, you know, throughout the day, just that one device, and she goes, and it was the nicer one with the pen and I could touch it, and I'm like, okay, yeah, I get the point, you want the nice stuff. But it was really funny because she had my ear to talk to about it, so she let me know. Yeah, we did do an informica security alert system. Again, that is what integrates all of our Cisco phones. They are not yet handed off into the intercom system, they all are running in all the buildings now, meaning if a teacher were to pick it up, and of course, I'm not going to say the four-digit code or whatever it is to ring out, it would ring out through all the phones in all the buildings, so again, one big thing for this building is we don't have intercom in this building. We do now have the ability to notify anyone in this building of emergency. They are doing the upgrades to the intercom system where the handoff is at the buildings, but those will be done before the end of this year, so that at any location then they can pick up now instead of having only three or four locations that could do an all-call. Again, that supports a lot of Charlie's work and that Alice, that main first alert for any type of emergency. We did the single sign-on rostering solution for online textbooks last year, that was called Through Class Link. We are extending that this year, you'll hear about that, and we are now about two months full into running two systems. Both HR and business are still running in our SIM system and in the new iVision system, so thanks to all the HR and business people who are doing all of their work twice until we go live with a July one date, looking for things this springtime, then we will start to introduce the employee portal to all the employees in the district as well. So right now, again, we email a lot of that stuff and updates to them. They'll now just be able to log into one of those systems and get those updates. Next we go through, we'll go through the five areas, and again, if you're looking at the Master Tech Plan, there's five main areas that we look at every year when we look at this. We have infrastructure and access, we have the devices or universal access area, what's needed in the classrooms, our information systems, and then safety and security. So I'll go over, this is kind of what's planned between now and the next time you'll hear me speak in a year or so about what we, what our major plans are moving forward that will require district dollars and things that we'll put to this at the end. But we do have a firewall refresh with both the SSC and Hubble, again, that's where our two internet pipes come in. Our firewalls are about five years old, it's about time to look at those, so looking at taking competitive bids with certain requirements too, knowing what certain firewalls can and can't do. Our firewalls now are Palo Alto, we are looking at different versions. Again, we almost switch versions as we do too, it's, you don't always want to get compliant with what works, you just always want to stay abreast of what's coming. We're also looking at adding an internal firewall this year. That is something that's new, that stops kind of the east-west traffic in a district. Firewall right now protects everything that we send inside the district, call it north-south, out to the internet, or from the internet into the district. It's that like barrier into our network. Internal firewalls are becoming more and more prevalent because a lot of attacks and things that happen come in and hit a system internally in, and then our talk to go, you know, laterally within the network. It's really not because it's, you know, going to cables, but it's that concept. One major reason we're looking at that internal firewall as well is the new HR business system does bring that system in-house. It is on a more upgraded version, so we want to put something in front of that as well to make sure that, you know, we're double protecting the financial system that's coming in-house. We are continuing with our MDF and IDF, again, those are our main distributions and our independent distributions at the middle schools. As part of that long-term network plan, again, where every year we're trying to do what we can network-wise, we earmark about 150,000 of my budget every year to do that, which ends up turning into about 300,000 because we get E-rate money. E-rate has just been re-upped for the next five years again, so we continue to do this and moving down at the elementary level to always keep the large network system that we put in about nine years ago, continuing to upgrade that, so we don't have to say we need everything new now. In that time period where we brought in wireless and we brought in all new switches and a new phone system, in that time period, we've redone the phone system twice, we've redone the wireless once, we've redone the switches at the middles and the high schools, moving them down out into other classes. We've been able to do it now without having to go back and say, we need a large purchase of doing this because we're always earmarking that dollar amount for those upgrades. And then the CHC security, I'll talk about the CHC security, but they really are kind of infrastructure related. Universal access to devices, this is a big thing that we're going to be doing this year, planning forward, and you'll see the first two, plan a pilot one-to-one devices for high school and for middle school. Difference being, high school will do full, what believe, a one-to-one where the students also take the devices home. This is not for next year, but the following fall, so next year we will be planning a pilot. We are working with a group of high school staff, right now there's about 30 of us in the group, that are planning out professional development, what does that mean to change educationally, what professional development do students need, working on the logistics, they're planning site business to go look at some other high schools to go through what they have done, so that each of the high schools themselves will be planning what their pilot looks like next year, with devices they currently have available to them, so this is, that pilot part is not going to be a purchase or an increase, but really planning what does that mean giving us all of next fall and spring to really work through that and this spring, we're really, we're meeting probably twice a month right now to really go through this. We don't want, again, we don't want to become the spring and fray, which is what a lot of districts did, they provided the devices and they're backtracking now and making sure that they don't have that foundational skills for not just students, but also staff to be able to handle that when they do have the device in front of them at all times.
Hey Rod, I have a quick question on that, sorry. So are you suggesting that the 21, 22 school year, I believe, was full implementation one-to-one at high school and middle school?
Yes.
Okay, so next year would be the pilot, okay. I see that on here too.
Yeah, that's, and I probably should back up, that conversation kind of started about the summertime in senior leadership, mainly when Google requires refresh of devices when they no longer support them to be managed. 6,000 of the devices, that very first big lease we took out for devices that we own, we did them as a dollar out, that we own these devices, Google was going to end support at this, it was going to be ending this June. Google extended it because they realized there were so many of those out there for an additional year, but it was, it was my eye-opener, I was like, we're so, it's at that point to where we've always used universal access and there's never been, you know, that huge request to always go that, but are we at that point? So we really kind of took a step back, talked at the EC12s and at the level meetings about what the devices mean in the buildings and is this a time to look at it? Because financially, I was going to be refreshing almost what would have put us at a one-to-one as it was, but were we ready for that? And after three or four months of discussions, then working with the department heads and everything coming back, and then they heard Melissa talk about what was coming with message production and inquiry, and they all said, yeah, we probably need to go one-to-one, so we're bringing our point, but what was up? But again, we support what's coming, but that's kind of where those conversations came. And again, the high schools are, yes, they really want the more traditional one-to-one where the students will be taking them home and we're working on what that would look like. Middle schools, really, yes, they want students to have access at all times, but maybe not to go home, maybe they're in the building and they're working at what their pilot might look like. We're not at the same stage as we are at the high school with our planning, or with the elementary where we're looking on their device deployment. That went out to the principals as well and it wasn't an overwhelming that they wanted one-to-one. Most of the elementaries are probably at a one-to-one, probably through grades two through five already if they were to redistribute their numbers, and they have a large number of iPads as well, so the demand wasn't there, so we're still looking at what that would look like for them. But yes, it would be a full refresh for one-to-one at the middle and high school.
Rod, before you leave, what is the device? What do you define that to be?
The device right now we're looking at are Chromebooks. We're not set on a particular model or anything as they continue to be updated. One nice thing is, is Google has mandated that any device that comes out now has to be, they will support for eight years of their service. So we're not at a worry that if we buy something now that in two years they're going to say we got to stop servicing that one as well. They actually have a site now that tells you any model you get. Part of the blended learning that we did is we bought a different type of device than the normal model we've been using, because we wanted to see what students take advantage of something that, again, in math and science, that they can write on it and screen record it, it has touch and a little bit more. The price point's about $100 difference from another model, but we wanted to find out if they're not going to use it because it's just, you know, a Chromebook that I would use, but something that allows it to have a little bit more of that tablet feature as well, it can tend over and stuff, and it was overwhelming. That's the model we're looking at, those features, let's not say models. So part of our evaluation process and that plan a pilot group in the next year, there is a committee that will actually look at what is the most current one that comes out and then value between the six or seven different companies that can sell them for the features that they want. They all wanted two cameras because it's hard to hold a laptop and record yourself if you're recording other people, but most Chromebooks have two cameras now on both sides. Is it touch? Is it touch with a pen? So there's a committee that's going to be looking at that.
How does an iPad fit into that device?
We haven't looked at an iPad. It's, iPads are used heavily in the district in certain particular areas, but really aren't probably not needed, covered all the way over, and at a price point difference of even a used iPad is still twice as much as a top-of-the-line Chromebook. It would price us out right now. I mean, that's, you know, no one's, there's, the younger levels, the kindergarten one and two would want that, but they're not, we're not in that discussion yet, what that would look like for one-to-one at that level.
We get a lot of contributions from, you know, PTAs and so on. A lot of times, to me, I see the word iPad more often than Chromebook.
Well, and part of that is our encouragement to say, we're supplying the Chromebooks, that's our universal access plan to make sure that there's enough devices for what's needed. If you would like to add to it, please add to it in an area that we're not supplying it. Add the iPads, add that kind of stuff. We will bring them on and support them, that's what Jahan, one of his main roles is, is to keep the Mac stuff, and you know, I want to say now we're around 2,000 plus of those types of devices as well, but we lean on or ask those outside of organizations when you're donating, donate something that we're not already supplying, because then we do cover both. Again, not all, you know, we all use multiple devices throughout the day. One device doesn't always do it all, that's one of our big things for universal access in the beginning, they still needed access to other type of devices, so that's kind of where the iPads sit.
So if a student has an iPad, they would also, and they would need a Chromebook. If we went one-to-one and computers.
What do you mean, if they?
Well, let's say I have a personal iPad.
Yes.
Or a student has, and then we go one-to-one, does that mean that they would get a Chromebook as well?
Well, they would use a Chromebook for the Google, I mean, if they wanted to carry their iPad with them to access it.
Okay, but it wouldn't be, it couldn't be used as a.
We would want them to all have the same device just for the planning purposes. If a teacher made an assignment that's only accessible in the Chrome OS version, something to do with an iPad, yes, they can still use it as their own consumption, they can still make their videos and copy things over like we do, I mean, we use our phones to record things and can bring them in. I don't think we would ever restrict them, but we would say, yes, use this.
And what is the access outside of the school for students nowadays?
Right now, if they have internet access, they would. The one thing that we're looking at doing right now is, we're on the Sprint grant for this year and the next year. Sprint has another new grant out that's called the One Million. It's a one M authenticity, I can't remember the exact name of it is. To apply for, you have to be one-to-one, so I still have applied to be applied for it. District 204 uses it, and it actually is, if a family does not have it, they work with Sprint to get the access at no cost to them, not through us, but we just say, yes, we know of at least X amount of families from both of our high schools that can benefit this. So that way you're really putting it on, here, you're going to get free access and a hotspot, just like what we did with our five-year coverage grant, but it allows it to take it where we're not the middleman holding the device anymore saying we need that back, because right now our devices go out and, you know, they stay with the family for most of the year the way that they are, but we're limited to 250, that's how many we originally received with the One Million grant.
I mean, technically, every kid could apply for it and get them.
But right now it's just, they would be able to do that on their own.
Do we need to do that to go to that one-to-one, I guess?
I don't believe so. I mean, knowing right now that we have 250 and most kids that need a device have gotten those from the high schools as it is and, okay.
So then we, because we.
Our high. Our high schools work really well with the social workers and identify students who don't have devices. Again, I'm worried more about high school, where they are taking devices home, middle school and elementary, I couldn't speak to that right now, but I know at the high school level, going, if we were to extend with the one-M grant to the One Million through Sprint, if we were awarded that, we'd probably get approved without issuing.
When do we apply for that, I guess, then?
I would do it once we have a full plan. I would most likely do it for this next summer and say that we're going to apply it with a pilot going into the next year. There's a part of a write-up that you have to be in fully running a one-to-one, so as our pilot would count for it. I don't want to fill it out and be discounted because we're not fully there yet. That's?
And it's in there, what's the cost of getting to one-to-one?
It's not in there, that was on the document last week, which is on the?
Ballpark.
The board. It's probably an increase of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
That's all?
Yes, for, yeah, to get it, to get the lease going for the seven, very low.
Two-fifty a year?
Two-hundred-and-fifty, above what I can, extra above, part of it I'm already going to be covering, that would be an increase between two-fifty and five is what I think, but I mean, right now, I'm ballparking at about two-fifty.
Two-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Thousand a year to cover a lease for the devices, yeah. On top of my normal, I have things falling off that we'll cover, it's not just a two-fifty lease, it's a larger-than-that lease, but, yeah.
But we, percent-wise, I mean, are we eighty percent covered?
What do you mean?
One-to-one is a hundred percent coverage.
I'm probably a hundred percent coverage right now.
Oh, we are?
It's just, we are not distributing them in that way.
Okay.
You're talking iPads and every device that we have, yes, we are.
Well, I'm thinking that iPads, because you're telling me those aren't?
Yeah.
Cricky one-use.
Yeah, we are, we are ten-thousand-eight-hundred, I think, Chromebooks and over two-thousand-something iPads, and we still use labs and laptops and everything else.
When you do a pilot, what kind of percentage of students at either the high school or middle school level are that pilot?
They are still, that, again, both the high schools are trying to determine what that looks like for them. I don't know if it would be a grade level, they don't know if they're, they talked about doing a coursework, kind of like they did with different things. They're really looking at what do they want to get out of the pilot, logistical, PD-wise, to determine what does that pilot look like. Both the high schools now have around eighteen-hundred, seventeen to eighteen-hundred Chromebooks as it is, not all used at all times during the day anyway, so they would be taking from that chunk whichever they, as a building, decide. And again, that pilot group is everybody that's in our one-to-one planning, just broken up, not collectively, but due to their schools. Like, right now, they're broken up into five different subgroups that are focused on different aspects of it, you know, people from north and south and administration, and each group, it'll be all north and south, planning their own pilot, mainly looking at what information do they want out of knowing what's coming the following year. So I couldn't answer that yet, that's still in the beginning stages.
Brad's question threw me off. The pilot is twenty-twenty-one and full deployment is twenty-one-twenty-two, or the pilot is twenty-one-twenty-two?
No, pilot's twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-one-twenty-two is the full roll.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I will most likely bring either a, we have, you know, in six months, probably some type of an update where we're at with that, either at a normal board meeting, just as a normal presentation, or written, just where we're at, you know, with the planning wise, we'll keep you updated also through Friday emails as well, where those groups go, once decisions and timelines and things are made.
If I went to the University of Illinois, what would their criteria be? A student has to have some kind of device, what would it be? Laptop or a?
I don't think they care, yeah.
Okay, any of those would be accessible?
Any of them, yeah, yeah. I don't even know if they require devices, but you need to access something, but. And then, two other things that we're doing here in universal access, which, again, isn't really student access, but it's always, to me, it's always fallen under this, as we're buying these people work, is we are doing desktop for office locations, that includes the SSC, they've not been updated in nine years. We've been updating them, they just have not been new, and also desktops at all the other building locations. First time that these all went in, we did an elementary one year, then middle, then high school. At the elementaries now, there's only three or four desktops left, so this isn't a large, I think that number is under four-hundred-and-fifty total desktops, but probably going with something that's just newer, and maybe like a small, little, thin form platform that's like you see in a doctor's office to replace, and getting the bigger monitors, they're still using smaller monitors. And then, two, that are, there's actually six labs, and two CAD labs at the high schools are getting brand-new computers, and then logically, the way the labs, the four labs at the middle schools are getting fully upgraded. They're not brand-new, but we're using all the parts and upgrading their hard drives and everything else, we don't need new, they still meet all the requirements, just need to run their software, so that's work we have planned this summer. Classroom needs, again, we don't have major changes here, we are still just going through the refresh of projection and peripherals. Again, with that refresh, always it brings sound into the rooms, where, you know, a lot of places, they still have the sound up at the front of the room, it's putting sound into the middle of the room at all locations. We continue to work on flexible space needs. You'll notice as you go around buildings now, you'll see a lot of the smaller TVs now on carts and stuff, as they realize that they move a little bit easier than large ones. I think our total flat panel is over two-twenty now across the district, again, when that, we had seven-hundred and, maybe seven-hundred-and-fifty classrooms, is that very close? Eight-hundred, between seven-fifty and eight-hundred classrooms across the district. We're about two-hundred-and-twenty of them now, our flat panel, that does not include ones that are in offices or things like that, that the schools have purchased, but it is a, it's becoming more and more prevalent as they, as we, you know, Johnny Appleseed in them out there, "Oh, let's put a few here," and then once two or three teachers, you know, got them, now it's, yes, I want that, I don't want to refresh, take my smart board down, they really like the sound and clarity, they realize touch and all that might not be needed in all areas. Operationally, we are, we signed, I think it was in, two months ago, I brought to you the plan for the copier refresh, again, those are at, will be at their six years, so that's work that we have planned going into the summer, those are the large fleet ones, again, it drops the price back down. We have our year-one of iVisions, that's going to be happening next year, and then the one other piece we're going to be adding, which I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide as well, is ClassLink. We added that as the rostering aspect, which, again, that gave every student at the high school level who were in the one-off classes, the online access to textbooks, where we don't, we don't own unlimited, because it's a large class, it's only one class and only thirty kids can have access to it. It rosters so that those kids, when they log in on their computer, they click on it and it gives them their textbooks. Before, Laura and people at the high school would almost spend an hour each week just reorganizing it, if one kid switched a class in the middle of the year. It was becoming, so we got a program now that does it automatically from a synergy update, but we're going to be taking advantage of ClassLink, using the single sign-on portal, and I'll talk about here, under student data privacy. But our last piece is the safety and security, this is a, you know, this has become a big piece, it's the IETL, or the Illinois Education Technology Leaders, our big conversations this entire year, even from last, last springtime is probably when it really started, is on safety and security. There's been some new laws and stuff, so, again, this is, this is, it's probably the one piece that's not really educationally, but it is critical to what we do as a business, to make sure that we're always safe and secure. So, under our infrastructure, again, we have that cloud layer security, that's, we're adding a piece of Mindcast that adds that cloud layer as well, which, again, is, we have protection at the device, meaning we have virus protection on the computer, we have firewalls to stop things, as intrusions. Cloud layer security puts an actual filter way out there, like at the domain name or DNS area of the internet, which looks at traffic after it gets out past our firewall, that's another area that says, "This site's not good, this is going to Russia, don't let it come in, don't answer that." It stops and blocks things there. Mindcast, that's part of Mindcast that we have in there, we're playing with that one, we haven't fully turned it on, so we don't want to block too much content or set people off as they can get things, so that's a slow turn-on for us. And then also adding that internal firewall, which, again, that's not a Mindcast piece, but that is part of an infrastructure piece that's new to our environment that'll be going in the summer. As far as disaster recovery, that's a very critical piece to what we do, you know, the joke, I mean, it doesn't sound like a joke, but the joke at the IT thing is, you know, you have, it's not when you get hacked or anything, it's what you do after the fact you have to be prepared for. So, yes, we don't want any of the bad stuff to happen, but if it does, disaster recovery is what allows us to come back. We went this year, BJ and myself went a month ago, and listened to, Rockford was finally able to come out and talk publicly about what had happened with them. Sycamore was there, and Hinsdale were there, all talking about attacks that had happened to them within the last six months, and what they had to do, and it, we were ahead of the game, because in all of them, these things that we kind of are, were playing with and started to put in place, and are really using, you know, at the end of this spring and into next year, is all on disaster recovery. One of the big things that happened at the Rockford area was they hit their backups first, so when, so when they thought, "Well, we stopped the attack, let's just go and back everything up," the backups were already infected as well. So one of the things that we're looking at, is we're using Google File Stream now, which is a sync between our network drives and Google, so as people save things, they, it looks like they're saving it to what used to be their happy server in our basement down here. It's really saving it automatically to the cloud, and, you know, they just, we've made it, we tricked them, we made it look like it was all one thing, and it really kind of is, but because of that, we also added a cloud backup, which backs up all of that. Google has always said, "That's not something we need, your place is replicated seven times over," but you know how fast Google saves things, you know, if you type the word "I," "Auto-save, auto-save, auto-save." Well, if anyone ever did figure out how to hack or take care of a thing that auto-replicates like that and backs up, so we actually brought in a Synology cloud backup to test, and then we're pushing that out completely as a, we're taking kind of things off cloud, or out of the cloud and into our own system from Google, so it kind of backs up both our network and Google, but it's considered an offsite and an offline backup. Why is that important? If it's offline, someone can't hack it when it's sitting there. That was a big thing that they found out, is that you have to still take your backups and make them so that no one can ever get to them. So we started doing that, and we're, our offsite is at Johnson, we take our stuff over there every week, so if anything were to happen, we're usually only a couple days off of getting everything rebuilt, but being offline, we heard one of the top CISSP, which is a security, cybersecurity expert, no one in the room other than I was able to raise my hand and say that we take things offline, and, because everyone has been paying for virtual backups and everything else, realizing that's how districts are getting hit now. Schools are a targeted area, because they don't think we have the security and things set up in place, and they think we have the money and are willing to pay it to get our stuff back. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're ready for those things. A couple changes that we are going to be pushing next year, information is going out to the teachers this year, I've talked with the administration about this, the principals and building leaders and LLC, they all kind of know those first groups that I tell that this stuff is happening, but we are, I hope you all use two-factor authentication on your own personal stuff and your banking and things, we're going to be turning that on at the district level, so that no one can access anybody else's account. That's one of the first stops, is no account can be accessed unless someone has a phone and says, "Yes, I am the person logging into this right now." So even if we have someone who has access to our critical information, they won't be able to get past, if they're not holding that person's phone and know their password. So it's a great way to eliminate anybody impersonating somebody else, even if they found a post-it note with their password on it. Don't look anywhere in the schools, you might see some of those still, but if someone has two-factor on, they can't get past that, even if they know their password, so. We are limiting admin accounts right now, one of the benefits that we have in this district, is we still do allow our staff, they have local admin accounts on their devices, meaning they can add and make changes and things that won't get locked out like your administrators lock this. We are going to have to take those back, that is one of the number-one best practices they're pushing out there now. So we're really working on making sure that we have collected everybody's software and can put it into a software center, so they still can act like admins and have the things that they need without always having to put in tickets. This is probably the one change we really don't want to make, but it is one of the top three that they say everybody should be making regardless, is just getting to that time now that people will figure out if they really want to target, they'll pick vulnerable people who have clicked on other phishing emails and try to find their password, login to their laptop, and then be able to hack you in different ways, so. Another thing we're doing is we're forcing updates. Right now, we've always allowed people to ignore updates or say, "Do later, do later, do later," and sometimes later can be summertime when they finally let it happen. We're forcing updates now to where it'll give them only like three times to be able to do that, and it has to be done within a week and a half, you know, timing now when those updates will happen. We have pushed a couple of those things out silently, just to see if people notice, but we also always want to give that opportunity. We don't, we don't want to be the person that comes in to do a board presentation, and your update pops up and you can't ignore it, and you're waiting, you know, twelve minutes for some update that the tech people, because we will be lambassing for that. So, we're trying to do it so that we understand that people might need to bypass, but that they understand, and I don't know if the words get bigger and they get brighter, "This is your last time," I mean, we're going to have to figure out some way so that they realize they've got to click that update for themselves. The big thing we're going to be doing next year, and this is going to involve not just myself, but a group of probably the librarians and teachers around, too, is House Bill 3606 is the new Illinois student data privacy law that was passed. We have until next June to fully implement it. We're kind of ahead of the game in some of those aspects, and right now, if you go to the technology page and you look at student applications, I already have our agreements with those companies and our student privacy agreements listed. I did that two or three years ago, just thinking, if anyone asks, we can show them what, you know, Google grabs on kids, what does, what does the library system grab on kids and those types of things, but this, this new House Bill 3606 is going to require us, one, to have a committee of people to vet applications, because teachers no longer can say, "I found this great new math site, I'd like my kids to log into it." They're not going to be able to do that, because they don't know what information that site grabs anymore. Anything that can identify a student with two or three is too definitive, and a third, you know, of directory information, we have to have an agreement with them where they're not allowed, where they're not allowed to use it. So, we have always used a track, don't block philosophy, meaning we've left things open for people to go find, and students have found great things online, teachers have found great products, you know, if someone finds something and they say, "This isn't great," then we block it, but as, with this new law to protect our staff as well, this is where I'm going to go back to that single sign-on, we're going to be using this agreements with vendors and the committee to vet the applications with ClassLink, and that everyone now, not just the high school students who are in those classes, will be able to start on a ClassLink page, when they open their Chromebook, and it's got buttons for every, you know, "Go to Google," click, and it automatically signs them in. The sites that we know we have agreements with will be listed there. It's kind of that first tell, that if you as a teacher are telling your kids to go to this webpage and click "Log In," you shouldn't be doing that, it hasn't been vetted yet, but we can easily get it as part of that ClassLink. I just need to get a written signed agreement with them, that they don't use student information, they don't sell it, that they don't, and there's one other piece to it as well, that they don't data mine it. It's a new law, I think we're the eleventh state to pass a law like that, so luckily, it's not something that's only happening to us, so with my IETL group and COSE and everything, we're really working, working with other districts as well, as to making sure we all come up with a plan, what does that mean for us to make sure that we can still have a, you know, a fairly open experience for students to be able to go out and find great information and everything, without always having to meet those roadblocks, but it's probably more of a change for finding that one-off great product the night before, and you want to take and use it with your kids, that's probably not going to be allowed, especially if there's a login button, so. There'll be some training and things that have to go to all the teachers and everything next year as well, but I imagine that's going to take a lot of my time next year is coming up with what that looks like for our district to implement that student data privacy piece. And then, financing this as it goes, this year, the, kind of the things that are new that we're talking about up there are, there's, it's going to cost six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. I do have that security systems and services, that new is a request for new money, which I've been working with Bill on, and just to cover some of the pieces that we've put in place and are going to be paying for and signing on for in the next year. This is a request also of BJ's. We've been doing the security things, and I mean, I've talked about it the last couple of years, but we've kind of been using money that we have sitting for some of those network upgrades for some of that stuff. And he's like, we're getting to the point now where we've got to make sure that we always have an earmarked safety and security. And even the last two years has just grown so much, especially at schools. So you'll notice what's ending or what's expiring in my, in my overall budget. The lease is ending, or 120, and then those one-time costs or things that were only expensed for one year, the network work that we always did, that we do, the implementation cost for the HR business system and that first-year implementation cost, InformaCast totaled up to about 420. So the difference between the 690 and the 540 is 150,000. Or they'll take my, what was usually at about 2.6 to 2.75 for next year, so an increase of 150. And looking at the dashboard, as we look at the annual technology plan, universal access, again, probably still making progress. I think we're still at universal access with us, you know, in, in planning the one-to-one. We've, again, never, we're definitely not going backwards in that. It's just probably a change more in mindset and how we're going to be distributing the devices in the next year, you know, which again, will be more of an educational change. Are they all active or not?
I have a couple. Number one, we're, I don't know, well, 5G, although far around, is that going to affect us on what we're doing here? Would that have a major impact?
You know, it could, but as I'm thinking, if we're going to be, it's probably nowhere near ready for the first rollout of one-to-one devices, let's say the 7,000. You need about 1,000 for grade level to fit for six through 12. 5G is 10 times faster than what 4G is, is visible, is, or 100 times faster, I can't remember what it is. It's like astronomical speed, faster than what we can get out of the wireless in our buildings. I don't know what the penetration is in, even though you have Anderson and his wife and his mom screaming. It works in the, you know, you've seen the commercials, it's like it works everywhere. I don't think we know that yet, but maybe in the second iteration of a refresh of those devices, it might go to what was probably introduced five or six years ago, was where you're going to T-Mobile and buying the device, and the device is 5G-ready. And it's not through wireless or anything else, and it's through one of those. But I, I don't know. That's, well, well, too soon for us. But in the second iteration is probably something we have to consider. And I bet that the providers are probably jumping on that. They jumped on the 3G, but what's funny is they didn't jump on LTE. The providers, like Sprint came out with an entire group of Chromebooks that worked on their 3G network. Problem was, it wasn't fast enough, 3G itself wasn't fast enough, it wasn't that Sprint wasn't. There's, 3G is a, you could, anything with a video or an audio didn't play on 3G. It's just like on your phone, if you're stuck in 3G, you go into polls, you wait an hour for the coupon to load.
Four or five years ago, you and I went to a program at.
Light.
Light, and, and we, they were going one-to-one at that time, were the first really. And had we done that then, or now, is that, are we ahead, behind, you know, what, what would be the difference?
I don't know if there's a difference. I think, I mean, I think our staff and students are more prepared now. I mean, I think eight years ago, I'm not to say everybody went spray and pray, I'm not. I think some were very well thought out. Some of those that went in first probably were the first ones that taught us, oh, repairs are going to be a bigger issue. And they identified some more of that logistics stuff to help us plan. But I think even at that time, we had a lot of devices. Again, it probably would have seemed spray and pray. I think really our last four or five years of this, really working with what needed to be changed instructionally, really prep the teachers to create valuable lessons that required a device, not just the kid wanting to go to the device. I mean, if you and I remember, we walked in sunrooms and only two or three Chromebooks were open and they worked in groups, you know. You're right, the one kid was behind the keyboard and it worked for them, and I think we're probably beyond that now, so.
And then lastly, you know, the bank, for instance, you know, we have a technology audit. Is that anything that would do value to us here? Or are we having a third-party look at kind of overview of what we're doing?
I don't know, I think the last one was done years before I got here, the last time someone did an audit. It, I, I think where that came into play a little bit more was more on the staffing and support side. I don't know if the audits actually point what we would care about, which is how is it being used. If I remember the audits that I can see, they were very focused on financials and staffing. They really weren't, we're probably focused on, on making sure it has an impact educationally.
Yeah, I think the audits I'm thinking of more, the technology, you know, the, the hacking problems and, you know, making sure we're.
Oh, no, we run those, we go, we have companies that do. We just don't announce which ones we do, because it's not. The ones you don't need anyone to know what services we're using. That's why I leave names off of some things like that, because if there are vulnerabilities with one thing you don't want, you know, I very rarely mention our virus program, although it's a cloud, you know, I mean, I.
So there is, we do have some external overview.
Yes, yes.
How's the HR business software implementation going? I know it's, it's going live on July 1st. How's that work going? Bill, Charlie, you want to, you're here and editor.
A lot of excitement about it. We did a field trip to Plainfield, it has iVisions. Our payroll and HR team went over there and came back really excited about it. And I think the training, onsite training that's been going on has been very good. Probably, I think when we converted to SIMs years and years ago, it wasn't that great, and some of those folks are still here. So they're excited about the, how that's all working out and just the timing and scheduling. There's definite plan, a path to getting to July 1st, so I don't know, Charlie, do you?
No, very similar, it's just some of the things that are starting to create the new system, so that we do go live, we're ready to go, and we're ready to go live on July 1st.
We thought, interviewed three auditors, they, financial structure, and all of them commented how well they thought the, what is the name?
In the visions.
The intervisions, is that right?
Infinite visions.
Infinite vision software works very positively at other districts they work with, in that there's only about three districts left that use SIM, SIMs, whatever. So, you know, it's very positive reinforcement moving forward in that direction.
Glad we're not in the last.
Yeah, well.
So I guess on the HR software side, one of the things that I've always wondered, you know, from the reporting, the bills payable standpoint, every month we get the list of bills. There's a process before that where somebody has to manually go in and enter some of the, what the bills are for. Is that going to be simplified, so when we get this every month, we're going to be able to see, you know, what all these things are for?
It'll be a login, you'll get, whoever does that, whoever does that for the board, will most likely get a login and go in and do that electronically.
Okay, but when it comes to the board.
The bill list is.
The bill list.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes.
That'll be helpful.
Finally know what our, we're spending our money on.
So, so on that point, Jim set me up for everything. So in our next meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the investment we've made in our buildings. And I think one of the things we're going to do is look back at how much dollars we've spent on the facility improvements. And so when I think about all the infrastructure as it relates to technology, high-stream devices, I think, I think about those dollars investments also as a building investment. So it might be worth kind of bringing your tech dollars into that conversation, just as a, like, here's the facilities, here's the technology investment, here's the total.
Sure.
Assuming that combined is going to be a lot of money over the last four or five years. Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, I'm assuming there's no public comments, since there's no public here.
Checking the list, checking it twice.
There being no further action coming for the board in open session, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting? Moved by, moved by Mr. Erickson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we are adjourned.